It's starting to pick up, that's what I thought, but I didn't know. Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I try to avoid those.
Yes, we did.
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 make sure to keep it legal. Oh, okay, all right. If everyone could take their seats, we're gonna start in about a minute, thank you. Oh, okay, gotcha. Oh, no, that's fine. I don't know, but if you realize the more you give me, the more I will lose. Not like, whoa, whoa. This is my, this is my backup. Actually, what you asked me was a very logical question. I said, I have five of them, and I brought none of them with me, is the problem. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Arteman Mathi?
Here.
Arteman Sage?
Here.
Arteman Malumbway?
Here.
Arteman Burgis?
Here.
Arteman Painter?
Here.
Arteman Schmidt?
Here.
Arteman Black? Arteman Hallman? Arteman Bray?
Here.
Mayor Renner?
Here.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and start with recognitions and appointments, and we start out with a proclamation declaring October 29th, 2018, quote, "Crossroads Handicaps of the World Anniversary," unquote. Handcrafts, okay. Now, I even have glasses on, I can't even say that that's the excuse. Who do we have here to accept the proclamation? If you'd please all come forward, thank you. You can come on up over here, yeah. I rarely bite. Thank you. Up close and personal, and then we'll certainly give you an opportunity to say anything that you would like. But we have a proclamation, "Crossroads Handcrafts of the World 30th Anniversary." Whereas Crossroads Handcrafts of the World will be commemorating its 30th anniversary on October 29th, 2018, and whereas Crossroads Handcrafts of the World has been able to serve both our local and global community for 30 years, displaying exemplary dedication to empowering disadvantaged farmers and artisans, and educating the community about the issues of poverty and social injustice, whereas Crossroads Handcrafts of the World continues to benefit from the guidance of its original founders, Charlene Watts, and Marilyn Townley, and an original store owner, excuse me, original store manager, Carol Schrantz. Therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim October 29th, 2018 as Crossroads Handcrafts of the World Day, and I encourage residents to recognize the impact of Crossroads Handcrafts of the World in our city, and thank those who served to create a ripple of change across the world. Thank you all very much, appreciate it. And if you want to, did you want to make any remarks, or?
I would say one thing.
If you'd speak into the microphone, please, thanks.
I think you should know that hundreds of volunteers have helped man this store over all these years. We now have a roster of 60? That we use every month. So, it's quite remarkable, and they enjoy each other, so it's a good community project.
Great, well, thank you, and I think we can all agree that it's remarkable. Thank you, Charlotte?
I have to take the opportunity for two things, to thank Karen for the support she has been for Crossroads all of these years, and also to urge you as the governing body of our city to give even more priority to dreaming of what downtown could become, because we want to be part of it, we don't want to leave it, but we do need the council to move on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Our next recognition, going back to the agenda, is presentation of the City of Bloomington Police Department Police Officer Commission Certificate to Michael DeRoux, who has completed probation. And I know that we have our distinguished chief here and everyone else, and so I think what we want to do is bring our officer forward, and the chief, and others, and family or friends if they want to take photos. Please, come forward. You stay with me. Yeah, yeah, please, come on, come on up.
Okay. Officer Michael DeRoux was hired on September 26th, 2016. Prior to accepting a position with BPD, Michael worked at ISU as a steam power plant operator for five and a half years, and he was a volunteer for a local fire department. Michael also serves in the Air National Guard, where he has served in numerous capacities to include aircraft mechanic, sheet metal fabricator, an Air Force security police officer, and most recently, a flight engineer. He has recently been promoted to Master Sergeant. We are very honored and indebted to him for his service, as he has been deployed twice. It is a privilege to welcome his wonderful family to the BPD family. His kids always bring a smile to your face, as you can see. And Mrs. DeRoux has also served in the Air National Guard. They are devoted parents and share their love with others as foster parents, and Michael is already a member of the Board for the Toys for Tots program within BPD, and his hobbies include flying, hunting, and target shooting. Welcome, Michael, DeRoux, and family.
Officer DeRoux, do you have any comments?
No, not at all, thank you very much. It's been an honor and a privilege so far to serve for the City of Bloomington. A very, very different position than anything I've done before, but it's a lot of fun.
And it's honor, privilege to have you join us, and to have your beautiful family here. Thank you so much. Next, we move to public comment, and, ah, here, I have the cards. And we have four people who are, have registered for public comment, and I do want to remind everyone that if you want to have problems solved on site, or perhaps answers, if we can possibly do it, in a sense, I have a town hall meeting or the equivalent of that, a mayor's open house, every Friday before a Monday City Council meeting, and we meet over in the Fishbowl, right where most of our department heads are right now, and we either have the city manager or someone else who's there to help answer questions, as well as myself, I believe we had Alderwoman Hallman the other day, says sometimes an alderman or alderwoman will join us as well. So, if you want specific answers, that's why I'd recommend that you go. In terms of public comment, our general policy is, of course, not to respond to public comment. So, at this point, we have, you have up to three minutes apiece. We're gonna start with Patrick Dullard, and then Gary Lambert, Donna Boland, and Scott Steinle.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Dullard, I live in Normal, Illinois. I come to unite as president of the Friends of the Constitution Trail, and specifically to reference item 8B on your regular agenda regarding the Safe Routes to School funding over at Sheridan School. Safe Routes to School is an excellent program for developing infrastructure around schools. The city has already got a great track record with it, which will increase their likelihood of receiving this grant. I'm referring to the Grove at Kickapoo Creek, where they built the road and cooperated with Unit 5 there. I'd let you know that Chambana has done extensive Safe Routes to School work building their infrastructure, and I'd also like to remind you that this is 100% reimbursement, so no money is coming out, it's all coming from the program itself. While I have the floor, I was gonna go ahead and throw a couple other things at you. Earlier this year, the council purchased land between Umpire and Walnut, that intersects the Constitution Trail. The Friends of the Trail have authorized me to donate $10,000 toward that project. We also recently received a $5,000 estate gift that could be used for a water fountain bench there, and we have a John English Fund that we utilize for planting trees and stuff. The main work that would need to be done is kind of straightening the trail out there. I encourage the council to reach out to staff and work on a plan to get that developed, while the funds are being offered, so that's one. The second, I'd like you to start thinking long-term, there's the potential of a trail from Bloomington to Mansfield. There's also work that's gonna be going on at Hamilton Road, finally, to connect those two sections. And there will be trailway connections there, but we need to connect the city to there, so there's right-of-way along the railroad tracks from where the trail ends at the cemetery going south toward Bun. The one hiccup is trying to get past the Tick property. I would suggest an easement rather than trying to acquire the property. Maybe it might be a way to move forward with that, but long-term, we need to find a way to connect to other projects that are gonna be developed in the future. And then the last one I would like to suggest to you is, 20 years ago, we had in the plans to develop trail along Sugar Creek. Low-hanging fruit would be O'Neil to White Oak Park, the city already acquired and owns all that property. Let's look for grant funding and try to find ways to develop that area. The west side is really neglected in terms of trail work, so we could really use to do a little bit more there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary Lambert, and then Donna Boland, and Scott Steinle.
Good evening. I'll be really quick tonight, I just had a question, we brought it up Friday afternoon. I had a question on the zoo expansion, item D, and the question was, why that expenditure was not included in the budget? You know, it was my understanding that, you know, changes to the budget were for emergencies or for unplanned work. Now, I know that's been in the mill for a long time, and we've talked about it a lot. Have nothing against it, but sole question is, why wasn't in the budget? And maybe Jay can include that in his explanation, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Donna Boland.
I'm Donna Boland, I have 11 more, too. I'm here to talk about the sick leave buyback. I've already sent an email to all of you, but there are a few more comments I want to make. The council had discussion on this back in 2015, both August and October, and at that time, there was concern about litigation, and I understand that. But a resolution was passed, and it stated, "The city will continue to reserve the right to make changes or modifications as to how this benefit and other employee benefits are paid in the future." I think that we've missed a few opportunities with negotiation of contracts over the past three years, because if that phrase, "Reserve the right to change," or pending litigation, were included in the renegotiations over the past three years, we would be at a different point for negotiating the change. The council makes a decision. Regardless of the decision, I believe that the $3 to $4 million will not be saved at this point. The council is elected to represent 75,000 citizens, 4,000 businesses, and $3 to $4 million is going to pay out 250 employees. That's just some food for thought, thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott Steinle.
Scott Steinle, Ward 5. The rain that we had on October 6th, we, I understand we had a tremendous amount of rain, but I've talked to Jim Karsh about this, and, yeah, it seems to fall on deaf ears. The street was literally flooded. I mean, there was no place for the water to go. It was, thankfully, I was in my drive, went inside, and by the time I got outside, it was almost up to your knees, the water was. There is no excuse for that. If you would put double drains, double inlets in there, we wouldn't be having this problem, Terry. I know that's a real shocker, but I keep bringing it up over and over and over. There was parts of the street that washed away, again. And, you know, when, I know you said that the, Jim has said that the streets have to be relaid, and they'll raise the inlets then, but when's it gonna get done? 25 years? You know, we're gonna have to have somebody's house flood away before that do anything? I hope not. I am really, really, really upset to think that the gas tax, and the motor fuel, and all these other taxes are supposed to go to fund the roads, and they don't. They go in somebody's pocket to pay for something else. And to be quite honest, maybe when you come into Bloomington, it should say, "Welcome to Bloomington, home of the potholes. Enter at your own risk." Because, you know, with, I had a car that I did, by hitting the potholes in this lousy town, I did a substantial amount of damage to. Do you know the insurance company paid it right away? The city said, "We knew potholes were evident, but not that pothole." Now, how are you gonna prove it? It, you know, you've got more muscle than I do. And so does Tim, or anybody on the council. They've got more muscle than any taxpayer in this city. And I think it's time we start to look out for the roads. I had a neighbor come over, and they literally took pictures, they could not believe it. And pictures do not lie. Maybe, this would make a great news story, Terry.
Thank you very much, okay. At this point, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the City Council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Alderwoman Burgis?
7E.
7E? Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Sage? 7I? Okay, other than item 7E, removed by Alderwoman Burgis, and 7I removed by Alderman Sage, are there any other items? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of those items?
I will make that motion, Mayor.
Move by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. Okay. If everyone will go ahead and vote on the consent agenda minus the two items that were pulled. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We will move in the order in which they were pulled. Item 7E, Alderwoman Burgess.
I'm just recusing myself.
You're recusing yourself from item 7E. Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to pass item 7E as presented?
Move by Alderwoman Howman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, would everybody, excuse me, everyone go ahead and vote on that issue. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We can, oh, you're back. Oh, that was quick. Okay. Item 7I, and I'll turn that over to Alderman Sage.
Thank you, Mayor. This was, apparently, we had a preliminary vote or something, a vote along the lines for this item two weeks ago, or, I'm sorry, at our last regularly scheduled council meeting. And so I had voted no against that. And, and so, again, I find myself being somewhat in a situation where I can't be forced something after I was against it. And, and so, I'm pulling this. And, and again, I believe it's important that, again, sooner or later, we're going to have to come to grips with the idea that we're going to have to make some, some changes to services delivered by the city. We can't keep raising fees and taxes. I think I made it, you know, clear during the whole budget development cycle for, for the last fiscal year budget. So, again, I'm pulling this just because I intend to vote no against it, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alderman Sage. Is there a motion either for or against this particular proposal?
We move to consider, consider the ordinance amending the city's schedule of fees and amending various chapters within the city code regarding fees.
Move by Alderwoman Howman. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Bray. Okay. Any further discussion? Alderwoman Schmidt.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I wasn't here for the October 8th meeting because of work, and I know we don't want to rehash this, but it does, this revisit here has raised a couple of issues, or a couple of questions for me. And that is with regard to the business registration fee and how these fees connect to that registration fee. If somebody has to pull a permit for some service or some business every year, are they also having to pay a registration fee? Is that, or are they linked in some way? I mean, aren't we collecting that information?
Okay. We've got Mr. Mark coming up here.
Through these permits and fees, and then doesn't that transfer over?
The city council had passed ordinance number 201888.
Correct.
Which initiated the business registration program.
Correct.
And so, the business registration program is a $50 one-time fee for the physical location of the business, and not just as you come in for a permit. So I'm not sure I'm...
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, when you come in and fill out all of your information for a permit and get it every year, aren't we gathering the same information that would serve to register?
For a permit, for what? Because there...
Or any of these, there, I went back to the October 8th list. There's any number of things that we have, you know, skating rinks and, you know, massage services and things that are every, every year, somebody comes in, and I assume that's for a physical location and that we gather it. So I just was wondering how those things kind of cross-tab.
Interact. This might be a question either that we can work with the clerk's office and myself, but the intent there is the registration program is set up just for the physical location, that we can identify that, the primary contract of that business. The licensing that goes with that is separate, is a separate program.
Okay. This was also sort of an off, off-the-cuff kind of question, but when I went back to October the 8th, what is a public dance hall? And why, I mean, it felt so early 1900s to me that I had to ask.
And that we found out a lot of those there, but I'm going to have to turn that one over to the clerk.
Sorry, Cherry. That's okay. It's just a business that has dancing as a component of their business. So some of the taverns or what have you in town, they may have a, some sort of a dance floor that would... But that doesn't mean you can't dance if you don't... Well...
We have space here. I think we could, I think you could do the swing here.
It has to be registered, and you receive a license in order to have a dance hall space. That's okay.
Thanks. Alderman Mathie.
So I find myself in the same situation as Alderman Sage, that I voted no to the business registration last time, and I'm going to have to vote no to this because exact same scenario, he just beat me to the punch, so.
Okay. Alderwoman Peter.
Well, I'm glad that this got pulled. I just have a comment to make. I voted for this last time, but when I looked at the numbers, I was shocked for advanced life support, too. It's going to go from $675. In the next three years, it'll be $931. In 10 years, they're going to price themselves out of the market. I mean, who can afford that?
Just, just for clarification on that specific fee, when we adopted the ordinance for the advanced life support and the medical services, we had an increment built into the program of a 3% annual increase. And so that number, the 675, which actually should have been 673, was the number when the program was established, so that, we didn't adjust it when we, when we brought it up to the 2018 year.
Right, but...
So...
After 2018, it's going to increase exponentially, almost.
After 2018, it's an annual increase, and you'll see that under the asterisk area.
Right.
It increases 3% a year, essentially to keep in pace with the cost of living.
Cost of living has gone up? I, I don't understand that. That 3% seems to have been stuck in everybody's head since 1975, and the cost of living hasn't increased like that. We haven't had inflation since 2000, when the interest rates dropped to nothing.
When we had our presentation at the last meeting, over the last 10 years, the cost, the Consumer Price Index has increased roughly 1.9% over the last 10 years, and that would be the average over those last 10 years. So some years, you might have that 3%, sometime you might have a minus, but the average is 1.9. That, when we, when we did the schedule of fees, we carried forward the consistent 3% that was adopted when that ordinance went into place. And I would have to, you know, get back with Brian, the chief of, the fire chief, to determine whether or not that's a reasonable increase per year. But the same, the same fee rate of 3% also applies to our annexation fees as well. So at the time, that was intended to be something that would closely match the Consumer Price Index. That may not be the case now, but that's how it's structured under that, and we did not change that when we adopted the schedule of fees.
Brian got up. I don't, Brian, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain. I'm sorry. So that was a mistake in, in the presentation on the 8th. So that is the current fee that we're charging right now. The fee that's in your packet right now. We're charging...
878?
Correct. And so that has been a 3% since 2003, when, since we started. So again, we're not raising that fee, but that's what we've charged all the way up until November 1st, because of the ordinance that was passed the other day. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I understand how it happened. I, I'm not sure it makes sense, though.
But it is in line with other fees for ambulance services throughout, and it matches normal fees as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Other comments, questions? Okay. All right, at this point, we do have a motion on the floor, and obviously, yes votes in favor and nay is in opposition. The motion carries five to four. Madam Clerk, would you announce the four nays?
Alderman Mathie, Alderman Sage, Alderman Schmidt, and Alderman Black.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, we move on to our regular agenda. And our regular agenda, item 8A, is consideration in action on an ordinance addressing the payment of accrued sick leave for grandfathered employees to limit artificial pension increases. Just to clear, make it clear, we did end, six years ago, the accrued sick leave policy, and that is for new employees, and so we're talking here about the grandfathered employees. And I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to our city manager, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that this is an item that's been discussed many times in council. You all have given me very clear direction on what your wishes are, and also striking a balance, understanding that the employees of the City of Bloomington are our greatest resource. But at the same time, the financial impacts to the pension spiking are one that many, if not all, communities around the state have had to address. This ordinance that's before council tonight, quite simply, gives me very clear direction that when I negotiate labor contracts with the IMRF pension bargaining units, that I'm not to bring anything back before council unless the payouts of sick leave buyback has been significantly addressed. And I understand that. So that's what's before council tonight.
Okay. Questions from Mr. Gleason, or comments from the council, or a motion? Alderman Black.
Thank you. Just thank you to Tim for putting this together. I don't really have any other comments besides that, so I'm going to make a motion we approve as presented.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Alderwoman Bray. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Alderwoman Howman.
There were some questions that were presented earlier that I'd like to have addressed, and I believe, Josh, are you the one that's going to do that?
Yeah, we think that one speaks it up.
Okay. If you would, please.
Sure. Do we, do we intend to walk through all of those questions? Or just hit the high points?
Which questions are you referring to?
Are you talking about questions received over the weekend?
Yes.
Those are really detailed, to Tim's point.
Yeah, I think those are... Could you hit the high points then, maybe?
Okay. Okay. Sure. So the, some of the questions that were received are obviously in regards to the practice in place today, where if you're an IMRF employee and you are eligible for the sick leave buyback benefit, we have just to shade under 200 folks that at the time of retirement, what we do is we take the sick leave on the books. That, for most folks, is a primary bank that can be up to 960 hours, and then for some individuals, a short number, there's also a supplementary bank. And so we pay that out the three months prior. And so the question, one of them we got, was that, depending on the group you're in within the, within the city, some groups will actually get a separate check, or some groups will have those pensionable earnings placed into a retirement health savings account three months prior. It's the same process. And so the first question, just to address that in totality, is that, yes, in terms of pensionable earnings, it doesn't matter if you put the, you know, put the funds in a RHS, Retirement Health Savings Account, if you put it in a check, if you put it under a pillow, doesn't matter. It's still seen as pensionable earnings to the employee. So that's one item. The change to, you know, what has been presented in terms of the payout is in regards to that last three months, because IMRF has a 125 rule, which means whenever you retire, they look at your last 48 months of your Tier 1. Within the last 10 years, your high pay, but if, you know, you're getting sick leave buyback, let's face it, it's the end of your employment. And so what some communities choose to do is they will pay on the last, on the last check. And they would include, you know, a sick leave benefit along with vacation, because that was another question. Do we have an obligation from an employer perspective where we can move the timing of the vacation? We do not, per Illinois law. We have to pay that out with the last paycheck, which needs to be provided to the employee at the same time of their next pay or earlier. There's no wiggle room there. So there will always be some sort of pensionable earnings component in regards to earned vacation that needs to be paid out at retirement. So I think those are a couple of the bigger items. There were some other questions, I know, in regards to the, and I think it may have been even mentioned a little bit ago in public comment, about, well, this policy was enacted per the city manager in 1995. It was revisited by the council. We are a city manager form of government. And so, that being said, we take direction from the city manager. He or she can set that direction, and changes in policy do not necessarily need to be approved by council. And so that's another key point I just want to stress as well.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We do have a motion on the floor. An aye, obviously, is in favor. Nay is in opposition. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move on to item 8B, and that's consideration of resolution of financial commitment and administration to apply for the cycle 2019 Safe Routes to School grant, as requested by the Public Works Department. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, and I do see Dr. Barry Riley coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, this is a resolution that, if awarded, that will make the financial commitment to fund and make the repairs on the Safe Routes to School grant. This is going to be in the Sheridan School area, and Jim Carsh, Public Works Director, is going to make a couple of comments. Dr. Barry Riley, did you ask for 20 minutes that you wanted to go through? Two minutes. Okay, I need to drop to zero. But it's a great partnership, a great, great program. Could not concur more with the gentleman's public comments earlier. Jim?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. So before you tonight is a resolution. We're just looking for your concurrence on us applying for a grant, Safe Routes to School grant, and so we pull up the presentation. The, the reason why what we're looking with the Safe Routes to School grant is a continuation of our efforts, similar to what we did with the Benjamin School Trail. The difference, as was pointed out in public comment, was that was an 80-20 grant. That was an 80% federal funds, 20% city-local match. Currently, the program is 100% federal funds, so this is a great opportunity for the city to capitalize on up to $200 of infrastructure work. And so we really feel like we have a strong application in this case. And so one of the reasons why we were looking with Sheridan Elementary is the age of the sidewalks. Last time we applied for a Safe Routes to School grant, the sidewalk master plan was still in the works. It was, it was not completed. Now we have all of the sidewalks rated. We're able to take a look at the different schools within our, the City of Bloomington limits, and we're able to assess and say Sheridan is an excellent candidate for us to be able to apply and receive these grant fundings. So the, the other facet of this, it's not just about the sidewalks and getting to school. There are secondary benefits that you can see. There are three parks right in that area, and Western Avenue Community Center. So it's not just about getting kids to school, it's also about the activities after school. So there is just a benefit upon benefit. Another criteria of the Safe Routes to School grant that will help us is some of the low to moderate income households in that area. Back in 2007, the students that go to Sheridan, 83% of them are from a low-income home. That helps to ensure that we can try to make this a very plausible and achievable grant. And so because of that, we think that we are ready to apply for this. November 19th will be the date. We're coming to you plenty in advance, and we are still working on those final grant application package, but we think that now is the time to get this resolution from you. That being said, Dr. Barry Riley and Principal Jennifer McGowan, there, we really have a lot of thanks to them for this. There's a great partnership with this. It's going to take effort on their part as well. There are surveys their teachers have to do, there's work that that school has to do, but we really think that it's going to be, again, when we're done, we're hoping to get the funds, and in the next construction year, do about $200,000 worth of sidewalk work that is not currently anticipated to be done. So really, a win-win all around. So at this point, I'd like to ask for, if it's okay, Superintendent Riley to come up and just give a, a couple of comments about this. 20 minutes later, he'll be done.
You know, I, these guys are funny. I work with the board, too. I don't understand that logic, because I encourage people to talk very briefly. But I want to thank Tim and Jim for first reaching out. To me, this is one of those moments where we get a win-win. If you don't realize it, a lot of kids walk to Sheridan Elementary School. It's, we, we get kids that are walking to all of our schools, but that one in particular has a high volume of traffic. And if you think about Market Street and some other areas, it's, the best thing to do is make it as safe as can be, and this is just one of those things that will help do that. You think about those other areas that it, it affects with Western Avenue, the parks that are right around there, that's a big win. We've got a good partnership, looking at a playground at O'Neil Park, too. I couldn't be more thrilled with that. So I'm really thankful for the partnership with this project and some others that we've got going on. We don't always come and talk about those things, but this is one of those moments where everybody gets a win. So I would just encourage you to support that, especially when we're talking about something that is at no cost to any of us. That, to me, is always a big win. So I just appreciate it, and thank you for the support.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Gleason? Okay. We'll turn to council discussion, or I'll be very happy to entertain a motion before the discussion. Alder Woman Schmidt.
I'm very happy to make a motion to support this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Woman Painter. Discussion. Okay. Well, people are already voting, so I think that suggests... Oh, it's on that screen. Okay. Nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move right along to Item 8C. Consideration of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2019 budget to allocate funds to the solid waste and, excuse me, solid waste and the purchase of one year of rootware premium solid waste, root optimization software with hardware. And that's going live on December 10th, 2018. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, go ahead. Opportunity to recommend the approval of this ordinance, but it's also opportunity for Jim to give some feedback on the solid waste program that the city's adopted. Jim?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Mayor and city council, I just want to remind you, this is, tonight is kind of a remembering time of some actions that you took in February. We made changes to the program from the services we provide and the fees that we do so that the solid waste program could be an enterprise fund, fully funded by the fees that are generated. Because of those changes, we looked to make collection in May and October for the fall bulk and spring bulk collection. We're now done with the fall collection. I give a lot of credit. I'd just like to give a huge shout-out to our crews that worked so hard. Within eight days, they collected 878 tons of bulk. And that's in addition to over 1,000 loads of brush. And so it was a tremendous, a yeoman's effort. They really, they crushed it. So it was spectacular. So again, that was even better than we did in the spring, the per-ton day that we collected. And so because of that, we're looking to make some changes in the spring that I'd like to tell you about. While we received a lot of positive feedback about the way and the effort that the city put toward it, I think there was something we could do better. Now that we have two under our belt, we didn't want to promise, I don't like to overpromise and underdeliver. We'd rather underpromise and overdeliver, if I say that right. But this is one of those times, and I think we can meet the service level to say, most people are used to their brush setting it out on the opposite day of their recycle. At that same day, it used to be that's when you'd set out your bulk. In the spring, starting in May, we're going to be going by our regular route so that people are used to setting out their brush and their bulk on a certain day. They're going to set those out on that day. I believe we can meet that service level for a two-week period, and I think that'll be an improved communication plan. We'll be giving you, as a council, more details. But one of the feedback that we did here is, hey, you put this out on one day, it can take you eight days or more to get back there. And that's eight days of a lot of material being out on the street. So we think an enhanced service level in the spring, even better. And so we're always trying to find ways to improve, and so I wanted to give you that update. The next one is, again, today is a lot of thanks to our staff and union leadership particularly. Within the next 30 days, you're going to see us dropping one of our garbage routes. In partnership with the union leadership, we had coordinated and worked on dropping one of the seven garbage routes. And that's, again, an effort that we did, working with our employees and looking at our different routes, trying to share the load, see what we can do. We're going to be trying that, doing a pilot after 30 days, and we think it's going to be really well-received. So again, I want to give thanks to 699 Leadership and our employees for that effort that we coordinated on. Other updates I'd like to give you is knuckle booms. You asked us to order those and look at using those. In January, those are going to be coming in. And within the next two weeks, you're going to start seeing roll-offs used, as we committed to, at the Citizen Convenience Center. And obviously, you know how thankful I am for the Citizen Convenience Center. I tell you all the time. So let's jump into routeware software. This is another commitment that you asked us to look at in February. From an efficiency standpoint, we think this is a wonderful step in the right direction. From a customer service, let's start with the most important thing first. Customer service standpoint, now we are going to be able to have video, real-time video and pictures that we're going to be able, from the office, be able to address citizen concerns and also be able to address people live, which is a wonderful improvement from what we have been in the past. So if somebody had said, oh, my stop was missed, or, oh, I did not have that material out, we're going to be able to help identify. You're correct, it was, that was out or it wasn't out. And that's a wonderful way to be able to address that. How do we do it? We're looking at having actually a smart truck. And so this is one of those opportunities that, if you look up there where we've got our different photos and video cameras, and then arm sensors. This is something that not everybody has. The City of Bloomington had the foresight, when we ordered the carts, to put radio frequency ID tags in each of the carts. At the time, it was a cost that some said, what are you doing that for? We knew, long-term, we wanted to have readers, the technology was going in that direction. And now, since 2012, six years later, that's paying off. We are now adding arm sensors and readers for those RFID tags, which will include and allow us the ability to be more efficient with our routes. So we see that as an excellent win as well. Lastly, whenever you have different drivers, this is what our crews see. It's an Android tablet, regular duty, so it's easy to replace. We've partnered with our IS, again, my thanks to Scott Sprouls and his crew. But these are going to be turn-by-turn directions that our drivers are going to be able to see. They're going to actually be able to receive work orders real-time. So if something comes in during the day, they're going to have the ability to see that request throughout the day. So again, what we're asking for you tonight is your approval of this expenditure so that we can do what you asked us to do in February. We hope that you see this as a positive move forward in our solid waste program. Thank you.
Questions of Mr. Carriage. Alderman Mathie.
Got a couple of questions. So I find this very interesting, to record the data on this. How long is the contract for, for this equipment software?
So it's a one-year contract currently, that we anticipate coming back to the council to look at doing extensions. And so what we do have with the onboard computer features, there are quite a bit of abilities onboard for us to be able to do pickups, skips, extras, look at some of that. What the office actually sees, that's what some of the key things that you're going to be looking at, Alder Mathie, of what are the reports that we're going to get. And so that's really going to allow us quite a bit of ability to get some metrics back to our council on a monthly basis.
Do you know what your annual renewal costs are going to be?
As I recall, it's $28,000.
Okay. I was just thinking about this, and I was looking at it over the weekend. I mean, how do we quantify if this was a good spend of money or not? I mean, what kind of, how do we tell, like, we saved money because we did this? Or where is that at, you know?
I think it's twofold. I don't want to make this sound like we're going to come back and save, you know, $100,000 next year with this. That's not an accurate statement. I think part of it is improved customer service. I think that's a key component of it. And then route efficiencies. I think this also really helps for our citizens to be able to have a better experience with our solid waste program. This is where most communities are coming to. So while I do believe we are going to continue to improve our efficiency on the route, I'm not tonight trying to say that by next year, we're going to save that $100,000.
Okay. The tablets, how are these communicating back in real-time? Or do they sync back up when you get, the truck gets back to the garage? Or how are these tablets communicating?
Real-time, and it's actually, they're going to be right in the office, so it's a 10-second delay, is what we've heard. So that's where it's going to be beneficial.
Is that with something in the tablet? Is that like a cell card in the tablet, or?
No, there's something on the unit of the truck that does that communication, similar to what we have right now with GPS. So this actually, we're going to remove some of the GPS that we currently have a contract with and add this. So this, for those 13 trucks, so again, this isn't for the entire fleet. I think that's important to note, too. This is for the automated trucks that we have on the street. So this doesn't replace the other stuff that we're doing with our bulk and brush collections.
Okay. So I'm happy that you said that, because one of the conversations I had, and I don't remember if it was Scott or somebody else, was if we're putting something in the truck that's essentially a wireless data collector, you know, I just, now that we're moving Water Department under Public Works as part of that process, one of the ideas I'd had was, can we use those trucks? They essentially drive in front of every house in Bloomington. Can those trucks eventually be used to collect water data as well? Right now, we have a guy from the Water Department who drives up and down every street to collect that data. But if the trucks are already going there every week anyway to collect trash, can, you know, I just, just as a concept of thinking forward of what else can we do since we basically created mobile wireless access points? What else can we do to provide services and collect data as we go along? Just as a kind of a concept.
Scott Sprouls heard you loud and clear when you were saying that. One of the frustrations that he had from this software and any ones that we had, he wanted to have more of a cradle point with that. And that was one thing that he is really, we're still trying to see if we can implement that. As of right now, it's not able to be implemented on these 13 trucks. They're hoping that technology is going to change on this. So that is very clearly a goal that Director Sprouls has moving forward.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Alderman Melloambe.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jim. Thank you for the update. And I also wanted to, you know, thank the staff, you know, for all the work they've done ever since we've made the changes. And as well as the citizens, because I know there's been quite a few people who are patient with the changes. And I'm happy to see that there are some improvements. If I remember correctly, especially with the collection of bulk waste, there was, I think the first time, it was about almost, almost two weeks, right?
It did. It took us about two weeks to collect, and we actually collected a significant less tonnage than we did this time.
Right. Okay, so now you're back to, I mean, you're down to eight days, which is quite a bit of an improvement. The other question that I wanted to ask is, in terms of, you know, how much bulk waste you're seeing being collected. I know when, one of the concerns that I expressed a while back was whether or not there would be education for residents, particularly based on what I had seen, is that people were setting aside, you know, things for bulk waste that could easily go into the garbage can. So have you seen a difference in the behavior of residents?
Two answers to that. One, we have done a lot of education. Again, our communications manager, Duke Witz, we give, thanks to her, a lot of different, anytime we've done a lot of sending information out, we try to include that. Two things with bulk. One, if it can fit in your garbage can, do that. I'll give you some metrics in a second. Two, if it can be reused or recycled, given to somebody else, please do that. We say that as often as we can. Don't just throw out what you have. But with that, actually, we've got some good metrics. You know, in May, we have our, what we normally expect per month for bulk tonnage. We expected in October to collect 1,100 tons of bulk. And if you recall, I said 878 is what we collected. So there's a difference between 1,100 and 878. So we did a, well, where did that rest of that tonnage go? We looked back at our garbage tonnage over the summer, and since May, it increased. And the lost tonnage that we had was pretty much put in garbage. And so it's interesting that we saw a spike, more of a spike in garbage, because those small loads that we used to have handfuls that we had to go and collect, which was very inefficient, now people are realizing, hey, instead of being charged $25 for that, why don't I just fit that in my garbage can? And so we actually have seen, thankfully, the metrics back up that change of behavior that we've seen. So that's a really positive thing. Another facet of bulk that I would share with you is that in our Citizen Convenience Center, it's a great thing, we know 64% over the summer of the material collected came from the Citizen Convenience Center rather than the street. And again, that is a huge improvement. So behaviors are changing. We're seeing the metrics to back those up. The program implementation that you put into place, we're starting to see that very quickly, actually. And I think over time, we're going to try to continue to encourage that. And I think really is helping overall to be a solid enterprise fund.
Okay. All right. At this point, is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Moved by Alder Woman Howman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Melloambe. Okay. Some people are already starting to vote, so. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move on to our next item. And that is Item 8D. It's consideration of a contract with Stark Excavating for construction of Miller Park Zoo, additional parking and concessions. I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is before council, the construction contract. Stark was the lowest of three bidders. Jay Tetsloff is going to come before council, explain why now on this project, also the financial impacts, and also that this project is a revenue generator once completed. Jay?
Good evening.
Like the tie, couldn't help it.
Thank you very much. Very fitting for tonight.
I'm a wild type.
So to go through a little bit, this is much like the presentation I gave, I think it was December of last year. And I'll answer Gary's question they had during public comment. When the approved capital projects list came out, this was not on there. We looked at different ways to fund this, got a little creative, and I'll get into that a little bit. So that explains a little bit behind that. So this, multiple things. Our top two concerns we hear from the guests is we don't have enough parking, and we don't have any food. So one of the ideas is people now can stay in Miller Park the entire day if they want to with all the things that are going on there. Also, the road that goes in front of the zoo would be removed during this project. If you've been to the zoo, you know, unless you walk, you cross the street, which, when many of our guests are about knee-high, that's never a good piece. And this is part of our zoo's management plan, the first infrastructure project that we propose. So this is not the picture with, so when we did the blueprints, no pictures looked good. So this is, so this is just the concept of what the new parking lot and concession stand will look like. So that's from the original concept. None of the current blueprints really showed up, so I didn't want to show you something that you couldn't read. So it shows the parking lot, top right, concession stand, kind of middle, bottom there. So concession stand will be next to, basically attached to our gift shop with the windows both to the park and to the zoo, so hitting both people. So you don't have to be in the zoo to come and get some food or drink from us. Parking lot is, adds quite a few spaces for us. If you come for any of our events, the parking lot's full before the event even starts. And trying to tell people every time I'm on the radio, come an hour before, come an hour before, see the zoo and then enjoy the special event, because the lot fills up so quickly. So what does it consist of? Everything I have listed there, concession stand. If you've been in my office, you'll see two coffee cups sitting on my floor. Those to collect water that comes through the roof into my office. So that has the original entrance building roof, and we've gone through a couple ceiling tiles before I just realized I should remove them. So coffee cups are in my office. It adds 71 spaces. That's actually more than what we talked about initially, so that's a 48% increase, which is big for us. And it's not just for the zoo. This project helps the park, it helps the neighborhood. That's another thing I really want to make sure I got across. It does have an alternate of a steel roof. I feel that's important. That is probably the first step in solar, with the idea of the zoo being one of the first buildings in the city to have solar. So that was a big thing for me from the very beginning, was the opportunity to, one, have a longer roof life, but it also sets us up for solar down the road. Also, something that came up during the design, as we looked through the project, is the primary electrical line. So right now, the electrical line, the primary line for the entrance building, comes off of Morris, but it's up by where the reindeer exhibit is. So it goes through six exhibits on the way to the entrance building. So future projects would be, we'd have to deal with this every single project. So we're rerouting this, and we're going in front of the zoo, behind Red Wolves, into the parking lot, in front of the entrance building to the new, to the electrical setup. So that's part of this project as well. It's one of the reasons why we're a little higher than what, what I'd hoped. But it, it does set us up for future. That, that's the big thing that I felt was important to, to share. That's, that's my big holy roof. HVAC replacement, so the gift shop furnace died last winter. We've been nursing it along, knowing that this project was coming. And those are all original pieces of equipment, both the air conditioners and the furnace. So that's a replacement as part of this project as well. Again, going back to, this is the windows to the zoo and to the park, pretty simple concession stand food, but it'll be good food. We're not going to do cheap. We're going to do, make sure it's quality food. Business plan we shared last time, wanted to bring this up again. We're looking at a dollar 10 per person who comes into the zoo, which as you can see, those are zoos that are comparable, comparable cities, at least the closest I can get to what we are. So I still feel we're on the conservative side when it comes to coming up with our business plan. And again, looking at our revenues, 147,000 is what we feel is additional revenue. Expenses about 61.8. Profit's about 85,000. So as we get into what, how we're going to pay for this, that's an important number to remember, 85,000. Again, I still feel that's very conservative. So how do we fund this? To be real brief, it's a loan. So there's $500,000 coming from park dedication. The 96,000 is actually slated in a fund in park dedication for the zoo. So we will zero out that account during this project. So it's actually 403 that this project will pay back into park dedication. So the park dedication is just, is loaning the money. It'll get paid back over time. And then there'll be a $600,000 loan from the general fund or financial, you know, that's to be paid back. That's up to finance to figure out what is the best avenue there. I'll, I'll leave that up to them. And it also is to utilize $100,000 from the state grant that we received. We're getting more information about that. This project was, was, the parking accession and the monkey exhibit were three we received money for the state grant. So we, we decided we weren't going to wait anymore, got creative, found the ways to fund this. We will use 100,000 from that state grant, so allows us to do the animal exhibit later. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of the funding. So like I said, we got a little creative, and we planned for the loan, like I said, 15, 20 years. Again, letting finance make those decisions, but well, with $85,000 to pay back whatever kind of debt we have, still feel that's pretty conservative.
Just on there, so just the, the project itself, the 500 feet pays for itself in 13 years?
About 13 years.
And that includes the roof?
Yes.
Includes all of the things that you're talking about? And then after year 13, we will have a profit?
Yeah. What the zoo's management plan really focused on was cost recovery. And as we built exhibits or, some would say expand the zoo, but just modernize the zoo, the idea was zoo would try to help pay for itself. And this is one of the projects we saw right away that would help pay, pay for some of the programs at the zoo. Be a little more sustainable.
Thanks, Jay. Before you went on to another slide, I just want to hit that.
Yep, that's, that's it.
Oh, and questions?
You're right on.
All the woman Schmidt.
I think actually these gentlemen had their lights on.
Oh, we've, they had, they were on, yours is the first one I saw. Okay. Let's go from Alderman Mathie, stage, and then Alderman, Alderman Schmidt.
So obviously, we need to do some repairs to the building and everything. Thank you for the presentation and highlighting that it's been ignored for a long time. I think that we've, one of the things that I want to make sure that I, you're doing is capital maintenance and budget planning as we're going along. So we've got a net profit of $85,000 on there. But in my experience, that you, things like your refrigeration, your fryers and stuff, those aren't going to last 13 years.
Right.
And so we need to be making and setting aside a little bit of money every year to put into that budget to replace that equipment and stuff, because it's not, I mean, it's not going to last that long. And just want to make sure we're using realistic numbers, that that $85,000 is going to be, get sucked into other places as you go along there, too. You know, I, I think that we've got a, a bad habit all, all across the city of not actually budgeting for capital maintenance for every project that we do. Every time we put up a new building, there should be, when's the replacement? What do we have to do? How much money do we put aside for that? It's not just parks and recs, but it's all across the city, and we've, then we let things go until they're going to fall down on our heads. Other than that, I mean, is, is, you know, every year, you should be setting aside some of that money just to make sure that there's always something that comes up and have fun dealing with the health department.
Alderman Sage.
Thank you. And, and Jay, I wanted to, one point I wanted to echo was, was Jamie's, because I know that's something that I think we talked about with this project. I think it was part of the conversation around the potential aquatic center as well, too, so that we have a, a perspective of a total cost of ownership, not just, you know, startup, construction and startup. And then to Jamie's point, the MRO, well, at least the background I come out of, MRO with maintenance, repair, original equipment, that type of stuff. And, and also then to just say, you know, Jay, congratulations, because I know you came up and you talked about the Flamingo exhibit, and, and you were willing to, you know, you'd done your due diligence. I think you looked at the metrics, you looked at the, at the folks coming into the zoo, and you said, we're going to increase our attendance by 5%. And I think that's particularly noteworthy, right? I mean, that gives me a measure of confidence, too, when, as you come back with, with the next phase, where you again have done some due diligence and some business planning. You know, so I appreciate the fact that, that you are bringing an element of, of, you know, what, what people like Jamie and others have to deal with all the time, is, is the idea of being a business owner and operator, and not just being able to come back and repeatedly ask for money because things didn't work out. So again, I wanted to, to call that out, because I thought that was noteworthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. The council member memo calls out the AZA accreditation, and I wondered if you would just kind of touch on what part of this addresses that. I, I've really appreciated your stewardship of getting this zoo to the point where maybe you're not sweating every time AZA comes.
We're still sweating.
Yeah, well.
So both, actually both, we were, a major concern was, not a major, a lesser concern, the last two inspections were listed for food and for parking. So this accomplishes those. And we've been talking about that with our, like, we just went through the accreditation cycle. So we, we talked about the possibility of this moving forward and how that would solve some of those concerns that they have.
Okay. Any other question? Oh, Alderman Milliowambe.
Can you talk a little bit about the roof and the solar option in terms of?
So.
Potential cost?
Idea is, so typically with a solar array, the contract's for 25 years. And so you need a roof that you can almost guarantee is going to be there for 25 years plus. The fact that we're not, we're, we don't have a project tomorrow to start, it could be two or three years. It's something the city staff are, are having those conversations. We all, many of us want to have solar going forward. We've got lots of areas we have picked out already. Obviously, there's the, the capital cost to that. There's partnerships, there's some legalities to longer, long-term contracts. So the idea is, if it's a metal roof or it, it's a long-term roof, then the contractor who we're going to partner with or, or just buy the array out, is, we know we don't have to go and replace a roof with the, with the array on there. So an array can go from 25 to 30 years. You can stretch them a little longer than that. But with the idea of having a steel roof on there, because one of my, I, I, I hesitated a little bit when we first started talking about steel roofs, and I went and looked at a few of the buildings, and it looked good. I, I, you know, I don't know if I would have noticed if you hadn't told me that was a steel roof. That's, that's what I wanted to see. So the idea of putting a steel roof on there, just, one, it just gives us a longer lasting roof, but knowing that we can put a ray up there and not worry about, do I have to change the roof out prior to the end of our contract or the life of that array?
Okay. Other questions? All right. We.
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion. Okay. I was about to say.
I would like to make a motion that we approve this.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Schmidt. Thank you for telling me we didn't have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. If everyone will go ahead and vote on this. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We're going to go ahead and go to our city manager's discussion report. So I'm going to turn this over once again to Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick comment on the lights. We with facilities try to new bulb, higher efficiency, and it definitely is dimmer than what we anticipated. So it's on order. Next meeting, first meeting in November, it will be changed, so it's a little bit brighter instead of the ambience that we've created here. And there we go. Item number two, Scott, do we have ongoing events? The events calendar? And lastly, Finance Director Scott Rathman, he's going to provide his monthly finance report, again, very high level, shows us where we're tracking according to our budget projections, where we've been the year prior, and just sort of a snapshot where we think we're headed. We are five months into our current budget, and internally, definitely are working on the upcoming budget and look forward to having those public discussions with council and the community about next year's budget. Scott? See, you walked away. All right.
Well, so far, these presentations have been pretty easy because we've had good news to share. Major revenues are still trending favorably. $341,000 over budget for Home Rule. I know I, I, I keep going on about Home Rule and food and beverage, but hopefully, those are good indicators of the local economy and, and the trends we can expect hopefully throughout the year. We've got an issue going on with our state sales tax. We're, we've had some conversations with the Illinois Department of Revenue, and we really need, we need to dig into, we get a, every six months, we get a CD from the state that shows all the, all the sales tax revenues by retailers. So we're going to be digging into that and seeing what's going on there. The items that are not applicable to Home Rule primarily are food and, and vehicles. So I think everyone's still eating, so our concern is that potentially vehicles, the vehicle sales are, are under for the year so far. So that's what our, that's what the indications are right now. I'll have more to report on that next month. But otherwise, everything's trending favorably, franchise tax. I think we just missed on that one. Hotel motel, I think it's just some competition in the, in the market. I mean, we budgeted down over prior year. You can see we're 94 grand under from prior year. That's just trending down. The Airbnb, we're not sure if that's taking effect there, but as far as the material differences, all the, all the major categories are really coming in favorably right now. Moving on to just the general fund picture, next month, we'll be six months in, so the projected year-end, I'll start updating that column. Right now, we don't have any, any material issues going on. I just wanted to kind of point out the charges for revenue, or charges for services revenue line, 5.4 million versus 4.9 last year. The BCPA is up $112,000 over last year. I mean, we held off on any management hires last year, so you can, you can see that that's being actively managed, and so that's a positive. Salaries, I'll comment on that briefly as well. We, in the, in the revised budget, we have a half million dollar vacancy savings that was approved during the budget process, and we're still under trend at 40.9% versus 42%. And also, even though, you know, we're going into the winter months, we might have some snow and ice, you know, hitting the budget. The salaries are usually a little front, front-end loaded in the fiscal year because of parks and rec. All those, you know, May through September, that activity usually kind of pushes it forward. And so we're definitely seeing some vacancy savings materialize in the salaries line. So next month, I'll be updating that, that, that line, and we'll start to get kind of a picture of our projection for the year.
Okay. Thank you.
One last one?
Oh, sorry.
Just enterprise funds, just brief comments. Revenues, that's what we've kind of focused on the last couple of months. The revenue trend, 42% is our target. That's five months out of 12. You can see across the board there. I mean, golf, 62%. Last year, we were 62%, so even year over year. We had the fee increases for sewer storm and solid waste. Those are a little under, and that's just because those, those fee increases, we kind of missed on, we budgeted those right in the first month of the fiscal year, but it took a month to cycle in for cash. At the end of the year, when we do all the accruals at audit time, that'll true up. So right now, they're, they're really tracking as expected. Solid waste, a focus of tonight's presentation at 41%. So no, I don't know if this is a proper term, but no migration from the larger canisters down to the smaller ones that we didn't, we didn't change that, that fee of. And so everything's looking pretty, pretty favorable at this time. Any questions?
Questions? Scott?
Hey, would you like, can you bring up the event schedule then? Yep. Yes, sir.
That was it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. There are only a couple of things I wanted to, went out on Saturday with a very interesting McLean County leadership program with a poverty simulation, where we wound up having about three and a half hours, and I believe Alderman Howman had joined us as well. And certainly, very eye-opening, I'd encourage all of us, next time it comes around, to, to participate in that. They, they give you a scenario. The only thing I liked about it is that I was 25. You were 21? Okay, I was 25. Unmarried and just got out of prison. And so, anyway, there, there were some, it was, it's hard to explain all the details, but it was very, very worthwhile. And in addition to that, I wanted to thank Alderman Schmidt for joining me in the Wayman 175th anniversary for the African Methodist Episcopal Church, AME Church, that certainly have a very long tradition in our entire country as being, if you will, headquarters for the civil rights movement in the South, but also in our very own city, we have 175 years. I may not make it to their 200th, but the 175th was, was certainly, you're just a wonderful service. And thank you for, and for being willing to sit next to me. Although she did say, yeah, I sat next to you for five and a half years. So anyway, that, that's all I have. Alderman, any comments? Alderman Schmidt.
I'm wondering, I'm getting mixed messages here. Where did these come from? Apples and candy?
I have no idea.
Apples are from New York State. Oh, nice. Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay. And they're, they're under any illegal amount, we have to report. Apple, the meaning. Okay. Alderman in black.
Just a heads up that I will not be here on the 13th. That's the Monday, meaning they got moved to Tuesday of next month.